Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight, council. Thank you for coming out also, and this wouldn't be a meeting without you. And I just want to, I just want to say that ever since I got the package and I saw that Councilor Siemens was on the agenda for the opening, I was looking forward to this moment. So at this time, I will, I will turn it over to Councilor Siemens for his opening.
Mr. Mayor, you thought I had something prepared?[42.12][42.12](laughter) Well, Mr. Mayor, after three terms and four elections, adding up the 12 years sitting on Steinbeck City Council, I'm not always in this chair. It's always interesting to look back on where we've come. I have, over the years, reported on different things I've learned on, while sitting on council, and today is no different. When I made the decision to run for council for the fourth time, I had to take a long look at the different perceptions, because my perceptions have changed, of what one can actually do when elected. Since, but this last week, reading through the Winnipeg Free Press, among other articles, our election is barely nine months ago, and I've read disturbing news articles regarding various councils around Manitoba. In one case, council has voted and passed first reading on the bylaw to reduce the mayor's powers. In another community, four councillors resigned after they voted to remove the CAO. And in a third, they get so heated during council meetings, that take between six and seven hours, they refuse to talk to each other after council meetings. The issue becomes about the individuals involved, not about the community. So after reading those issues about other councils, it made me think about our city council, and how we function, and how we have functioned since 2006. And I've put my thoughts to paper. In our lives, we make decisions based on information, whether our, in our personal life or work life, those decisions are based on a fairly clear understanding of our guidelines and budget, whether at work or at home. As a council member, we have decision-making power as a group, more so than we do as individuals. Council's role is to set policy and guidelines for the administration to follow, which, in the end, is a completely different thought process. I've said from time to time, I was first elected, the biggest thing I needed to grasp was the difference between the words governance and management. Council isn't about the day-to-day managing details, but to provide policy that will move us moving forward. Council does spend the majority of its time dealing with the governance issues that the city faces, and the management piece is left to the administration. When making decisions with the information presented, whether a public hearing, recommendations from administration, or through word of mouth, the information depends on the source. What I have learned is that I need to draw my own conclusions and not do my own appropriate homework, so that I have a comfort level with all the information I hear, and then provide my opinion on that issue. From the very first council meeting back in 2006, my wife Audrey has always coached me on how to dress properly, using appropriate phrases that we, that when something like, "Are you kidding me? Not that shirt, but those pants." In the last two years, it was my granddaughter, Madison, who, after getting me a bow tie as a birthday gift, coached me by saying, "Papa, now you need to wear a bow tie we gave you." Hence, the different look. From the very first council meeting, I have learned to appreciate the difference of opinions between council members. Each of us has a different and sometimes unique opinion, often bringing a fresh view to help the decision-making process. Regardless how heated the issue the council's dealing with, we've always met socially after council meetings. It has promoted unity and respect amongst us as council members. It has kept the issues to the topic at hand, and not made it into a personal issue that could cause a dysfunctional council. After this council's first study session, it happened today, I was again impressed with arguments for and against issues, and it was about the issue at hand, and again, it wasn't about the person presenting the argument. Lastly, I continue to be amazed at and continue to appreciate my community, as I start to see how it changes over the years, and for the better, understanding what issues move our community, what the different passions of our citizens are, and how they feel about the different issues. The feedback, whether positive or negative, is a result of people being passionate of what they want to see as part of their community. And in the end, it's a passion that we all carry for our community that will continue to make us successful and keep us moving forward.
Thank you, Councilor Siemens. Council, we have the agenda in front of us. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Swakeser, second by Counselor Hebert. I'll call for the question, all those in favor. That is Kerry. We also have the minutes of July 2, 2019, from the regular council meeting. They start on page one. Council, we've all had a chance to review them. Now we need a motion to approve them. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Hebert. Call for the question, all those in favor. That's Kerry. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, we will move on to item 6A, the, the public hearing. It is just a little bit after 7:35, so we will look at the bylaw 2125, second reading. I will now close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Workington, would you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is an application for rezoning by law 2125. Also is a public hearing that is to hear the question on variance file V-2019-18, which is also a concurrent public hearing file. The owners of the particular property located at 44 First Street are George and Deanna Sawatsky. The applicants for the rezoning and the variance application are Daniel and Stephan Potelman. Purpose of by law 2125 is to rezone the subject property from RLD, residential low-density, to RMD, residential medium-density. The purpose of the variance application, V-2019-18, is to allow an overall site width of 70 feet, whereas the RMD, residential medium-density zone, requires a minimum site width of 75 feet. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the property into an eight-suite residential complex on the site. Notices as required under the Planning Act were issued. There is two pieces of correspondence that were received with respect to this application. Copies of those were placed on the council desks earlier this evening. As far as the file itself, there is also a letter on file from Manitoba Community and Regional Planning regarding by law 2125. The by law was circulated to all government departments and agencies, and there were no objections or concerns noted. And council may proceed to give by law second and third reading, subject to sufficient objections. With respect to the proposed rezoning and the variance application, the land is designated as residential within the city's official community plan. There are three existing parcels with RMD zoning on this particular block of First Street, with one parcel containing a single-family residence, and the other two properties are in the process of being redeveloped with up to 64 dwelling units. Recommendation from administration is that, subject to a development agreement, council give by law 2125 second reading, and also that the by law be subject to the approval of the variance for the site width. And with respect to the variance application, recommendation is that council approve the variance application, however, that any resolution for that variance not be considered until third reading for by law 25, 2125 is complete.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Workington. Okay, council, so as Mr. Workington stated, we'll deal with the zoning first, then we will deal with the variance after third reading. Is the applicant here today? And would you like to take the podium? Please state your name and your address, and then you can...
Stefan Oldman, 65 Amberfield Drive in Mitchell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, for this opportunity to listen to our proposal. Just tell you a little bit about us, in terms of what we have done, in terms of research and experience with rental properties such as this proposed. We've constructed multiple units within the RM of Hanover, and we've been just amazed by the amount of people, actually, we get applications from trying to move into our community. And, like, we have people from, applying from Dauphin, from Winnipeg, from everywhere, trying to look to move to Steinbeck, because I guess they see positive things in Steinback, and, and that's always good to hear and see. So, beginning of the year, we had received information that this property was going to come up for sale. We are technically, as of July 1st, now the owners. We had talked with different developers that have done this in the past, and just to kind of avoid as many of the mistakes they've made and learned from. And one of the big things that they had mentioned was consolidating, or advising the neighbors. So, we tried to do just that. We approached the administration and asked for a list of all the affected neighbors. We got a list of 45 people, and what was amazing to see is only 16 people of those 45 were actually, their primary address was on First Street. With that new information, we asked multiple people on whether we, what we should do with that, whether we should go see all these other tenants, because I believe there's, the rest of them must be tenants, unless people just have other houses standing around. So, we made sure to visit everyone that was living at, the, everyone that had their primary home in the area. And this being our first time, we were kind of nervous, but we were happy to stand here today and say that when we went through to all those neighbors, there's not a single objection we heard at the time. And, and people actually voiced support. They said, yes, this place had a rough history in the past. Apparently, I hear there was some drug-related things going on there and whatnot. And as of its current condition, it's coming down, as you might have seen driving past it. So, yeah, it's, they were all in support and saying, saying that it needs just a facelift. And one neighbor had mentioned that because of the other construction going on in the area, it actually suits the timeline pretty well to get it done at, at the same time. In terms of what we're proposing, yes, it's an eight-unit building, but if you look at the file itself, I'll show you first the site plan. This is a picture of the site plan. So, the lot is big enough, in terms of what's required under the RMD zoning, which is what we're trying to get it, currently it's low-density. And so, our, RMD requires 10,000 square feet, we have 13,000 square feet. The front setback, we're way above that, I believe it's 25 feet, we're at 100 feet. The back is 25 feet, we're at 25 feet. The sideline is 4 feet, we're at 10 feet. And so, the only, if you look down the category of rows, we pretty much are, all the ducts line up, except the one where it says 75 feet, where our property here, where the subject property here is 70 feet. So, that's, that's why we have that variance that we're asking for. It's only a five-feet reduction, and in terms of sideline clearance, we have six more feet on each side than what is technically required. In terms of the building height and everything, it will be a basement with four bachelor suites, about 700 square feet each. And the upper units will be more geared towards families with three bedrooms, I believe 1,400 square feet units, four of them as well. So, in terms of height, the total building height will be around 30 feet, peak of the roof. I believe it was 22 feet to bottom, or like the, just below the roof. And, yeah, so, I, that, those are the same requirements that, like, a low-density would fall into. Technically, a medium-density can go up to three stories, but we wanted to blend into the neighborhood as much as possible. And we actually believe, because, like, the current house, I believe, or I know, is sitting pretty close to the street, and it's very visible and out there, like, it kind of sticks, sticks out, especially in the condition that it's in right now. By moving this back, we don't, like, this won't be as visible, visible as much from the front. And also, if I can just showcase here, so we have a 75, no, 70-foot property line here. 20 feet will be landscape, just to kind of hide everything and close it up, or we intend to plant trees in it, and, and just make it look good. And there will be a 30-foot driveway. In terms of the garbage bin, we have talked to engineering, and they approved that location, just right there for the garbage bin. And, yeah, in terms of parking, we have more than required stalls, which actually, we plan to use that space and make some, some handicap parking available, just in case that's required. Or maybe it could be parking for a family that has multiple kids, just, so, just to have some consideration for those types of things. In terms of the building footprint, so the duplexes we built in Hanover, they're about 2,500 square feet, if you look down. This building is only 600 square feet bigger. It's not a very big building, like, it's, it's 30, 3,100 square feet footprint. And, yeah, and with, with the neighborhood and everything that's currently going on, we try, we are, are, or we try, or we are trying to blend in as much as possible. I should show you a second picture. This is an realistic rendering that we had gotten a graphic designer to do for us, and that is essentially the color scheme and everything. So, in the past, I've driven past multi, medium-density development, and some of it was either developed really cheap, and does not look good, which I personally would have a problem with, living beside, too. That is not our intention. But, and others, I've seen, they look too modern and too out of place. They stick out like a thumb, and, but with, with our proposal, we believe we would kind of fit into that residential look of a single-family house, and kind of, yeah, we, we're going to try to blend in with the neighborhood, and of course, there's going to be engineering with site plan and everything, and there will be fences. We have talked to the neighbors, both, like, all right next to, we made sure that we talked to them. One, one was a tenant, but we also talked to them, and they had all given their blessings. So, in terms of that, yeah, that's pretty much all we could do, and we hope we've done enough homework, and, yeah, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I'll, I'll have you stay at the podium, in case there's some questions of council.
Sure.
Counselor, are there any questions for the developer?
You went through the measurement, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yes.
One question.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Yeah, one, one question for the presenter. You had, you went through the numbers pretty quick. What's the distance from the back of this apartment?
Excuse me, just, just hold it, I can't hear anything, so...
(pause)
There's a big vent on that door, and it's just coming right in. Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Hebert, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question. What was the distance from the back of the building to the neighbor to the back to property line?
Actually, there is a back lane that it's backing onto. It's 25 feet to the back lane, which is within the requirements.
There's no decks on the back?
No.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we'll have you take a seat, and we'll probably be asking you to come up again. Is there anyone here wishing to object? Take the podium, state your name and address, please.
Jamie Burgess, 56 Donald Street. I'm here officially to object to this by law. First of all, I would like to say that I think this by law should have been denied right at the beginning of first reading, as it does not follow either the community plan or the zoning by law. The official community plan shows this area as residential, as was mentioned. The by law shows this as a residential area. Residential area is RLD, which is district intent for accommodating primarily single and two-family houses, for your by law 62.2. Give me a minute here. Now, the developer wants to change this to an RMD lot, in a residential district. His lot width would have to be 75 feet, which he mentioned, which is only 70 feet. Now, it doesn't seem like a lot, but the bylaws are written for a reason, to recite what the lot width would have to be. And it's not meant to always give variance on lot widths to make things fit within an The front yard alignment is 103 feet back from any of the, of his property line. All houses on that street are set back at 25 feet. So, this house, this new building will be in their backyard, looking over their backyards, which will create no privacy for those peoples in that neighborhood. Which, which would clearly state that the proposed development is too big for this lot, and would not be consistent with the rest of the property with the setbacks already existing on the street. Then, the increase in traffic will become an issue, as we do not know yet the impact of the large development across this street that the council approved last year. In closing, after speaking to many of the residents in the neighborhood, which we have done in the past, which were all opposed to the idea, once I actually went through it and basically told them the setback at 103 feet, that they, I would have clearly got the 25 rejection letters that were required to move this to municipal board. But we all felt that it was a waste of time, as council has repeatedly shown that they do not, they will do what they will want, and will not follow the, the board report and their own bylaws and policies.
Any questions from council? Do you have any, any questions for, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burgess, if you could clarify, not following the municipal board requirements, did you state that?
Yes, I did.
Could you please explain what's not being followed with the municipal board requirements?
We do believe the development across the street is not being followed by the municipal board ruling.
Do you want...
We have argued this with the city for last year and a half.
Do you want to, so you're, just to clarify, so you're saying that the city is not following the municipal board guidelines, the ones that we have...
That is correct. That is what we feel is not, and we have not got any reasoning whatsoever or explanation from the city, just that they are following the municipal board ruling.
Could I ask the city manager a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Workington. The allegation is made that the city is not following municipal board requirements in regards to another development on First Street. Is that correct?
That question is not a subject matter of this public hearing. Is the counselor sure that he wishes me to answer that question at this public hearing?
I suppose not. I mean, I, I'm just trying to, because this was given as a reason for the objection, but I suppose that's not directly relevant.
I can answer if you wish.
That's fine.
Anything further? Okay, there's no more questions, please. Anyone else here wishing to object?
I own a property at 33 Geesberg. It is a rental property. My son lives there, has for about 15 years lived there. And I'm attending today to object for a number of reasons. My predecessor, of course, indicated that there is 103-foot setback. If you drive down this street, right next to this property is a beautiful duplex. This property is zoned, okay, for the construction of a beautiful duplex. That's the zoning that we have in place right now. There's a variance application as well, so there's a rezoning application, as you know, to go from light-density residential to medium-density, and we all understand on council now what that means. There's also an application to vary the width requirement, because medium-density, RMD, residential medium-density, requires 75 feet as a minimum, and for a reason. Our planners, okay, the city hires planners, the municipalities hire planners, and they put it, they basically put together a zoning by law. That makes sense. If you're going to go multi-residential on a, on a lot, the lot size should not be less than 75 feet, a minimum. So, some of you have not been fortunate enough, or unfortunate enough, to have me appear before you, because you're newly elected. But I just want to go through, if I can, the test for a variance.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Jodwin, we're dealing with the zoning at this point.
Zoning?
The zoning is, we're dealing with the zoning now, we'll be dealing with the variance after third reading.
So, okay, fair enough. But, in terms of zoning variance, we're going to make an exception to the plan that we put together. And for new council members, you have no idea, and the, the, your, the veterans on council will tell you, how much work council puts into putting together a zoning, a zoning plan. The, the, the plan itself, it is a lot of work. We decide which areas are going to be zoned a residential, low, medium, high-density. And if you're going to make an exception to that, and that's what you're being asked today to do, to make an exception to it, I'm going to ask you, why would you make an, an exception to it, when we have a plan in place? And it's, it's my position that an exception should only be granted if, if in fact, there's a unique and unusual hardship to the owner of the property. The, the applicants just indicated that they have purchased this property, as of July 1st, I understand. And is there anything unique or unusual about the property that's going to cause them undue hardship, while they just bought it? And I want to communicate to council in terms of the value of a variation, a change, not a variation, a change to the plan itself, to go to medium-density. As council probably knows, every door is worth about $45,000. As you know, I develop properties, so you can take it from me, or you can take it from my intel. Every door is worth about $45,000. So if you can buy a piece of property like, like we have here, and add eight doors, okay, you guys can do the math. The variation application, of course, makes sense from a developer's perspective. It doesn't make sense from the perspective of the neighborhood. And I noted the comment of the applicant. We want to, we want this to have a residential look. With 103-foot setback and a parking lot that consists of not less than 14 or 16 parking stalls up front, is that a residential look? And I'm a bit surprised that the owners of the, of the duplex next door aren't here, because my predecessor was so eloquent in his submission, where he said, "All of these individuals that drive up or look out their windows are going to look right into the backyard, backyards of, of the neighbors." And quite frankly, that's not good planning. And if there's some exception, some reason why we should make an exception to our, our zoning plan, then I like to hear it. But so far, I haven't heard anything. Those are my comments. Those are my objections. Subject to any questions you may have.
Is there any questions from council? Susan? Counselor Peter?
Thank you. You mentioned you develop as well.
I do.
How many doors do you own, living in Steinback? Like, how many rental doors would you...
I, I own three rental homes, an apartment, a five-plex, and a number of commercial buildings, obviously.
Would you, or anybody on your behalf, have ever applied for variance for any projects you've done?
Never.
Never?
Never. In fact, council, you remember, I, unfortunately, I've attended and I've used the term, and I regret it, that the applicant was the king of variations or variances in, in one of my, one of the times I applied, because I really believe, okay... of the times I applied because I really believe, okay, that every time we make an app, an exception, then the next person that comes along is entitled to that exception unless there's a unique circumstance to make that exception. There's absolutely, we have a plan. We followed the plan. Yes, there is a process to make an exception for it, okay, in exceptional circumstances, but what we cannot do is make an exception every time a developer applies because it makes sense for the developer. Whether we're going, if this is zoned residential, if this, if this area should be zoned medium density, residential medium density, the next time we review our plan, let's rezon the whole strip, medium residential density. Let's not checkerboard this. It doesn't make any sense for us to approach, okay, zoning in this fashion, nor doesn't it make any sense for us to approach variations in that fashion, and I'll speak to that in a moment. But I can tell you, I never have applied for variation, and I own not only significant properties in the city of Steinbach, I own significant properties in the arm of Hanover.
Anything further from council? Thank you, Mr. Jodwin. Is there anyone else wanting to, okay?
My name is Teresa Burgess. I live at 56 Donald. This is not the first time we have been in council talking about First Street. I commend the applicants for their diligence in speaking to people. They did actually come to our house, and we had a lengthy conversation with them. And we were quite surprised when they told us that your city planner told them that the south side of First Street was in fact part of the transitional zone, when in fact it's not. As a matter of fact, we pulled out our great big map and showed them, "Look, here, see, right on your plan." Hmm, not a part of it. And yet, they told us that that was the information they received from your city planner. With respect to the four-foot side yard, I would suggest that perhaps city council take a look at table 4.1 Dimension Standards. An RMD, it does state minimum lot width, 75 feet minimum, again. That point has already been covered, at least 75 feet for RMD. But if you read across, minimum side yard, four feet. However, there's a little A beside that, and if you go on to read what that A means, it says, "Where no public lane is located at the rear of a site and no garage is attached to the house, one side yard must be a minimum of 12 feet." Now, the applicants indicated that there was a lane in behind, but that is not an official lane. An official lane, by definition, has to have two exits. You might want to check your documentation on what constitutes a lane. For the record, I object to this. This is just another case of the city not following its own bylaws, and Mr. Siemens had it correct at the first reading when he said that it did not meet the requirements and it should not be passed, and I would concur with his initial, his initial statement with respect to this property.
Is there any questions from council? Is there anyone else wanting to object? Okay.
Hi, my name's Luke Weave. I am a developer across the street that's working on a First Street project. I wasn't here for the other presentation here, but just looking at the site plan and as a, as a neighbor property owner, I'm very open to development, obviously. We do it too. Infill housing is something that I've worked on and take a lot of pride in doing to help revitalize the community. I do, however, want to say that I've admired the city, city planner and the city council here for adhering to the bylaws they have. I asked for certain concessions along the way through my own development that I was firmly but kindly and professionally told that, "Look, we have to follow these specific rules and guidelines, not just because of the municipal review board hearing, but because of the simple zoning bylaw issues that you have." And I do agree very much with some of the folks that have talked about the parking lot in the front. One of the main things I wanted to just mention tonight is the other property just to the, I guess would be northeast of here, I've spoken to that neighbor personally, he owns it as a rental property, he would sell that property to me, to these folks. If they want to invest more in the community, and somebody mentioned here a unique circumstance, you don't need to ask for a variance then. So I know you're not necessarily doing the variance thing tonight, but to change a zoning without a variance doesn't seem to make sense either because the zoning requires that amount of frontage, right? So, you know, buy another property, come back with a plan that kind of makes sense where you don't have to ask for any concessions at all, and I think that makes sense, at least then, you know, council can make a decision based on that. As far as you already having done something that's been implied, you haven't done anything yet, you're just listening to this public hearing. So we, we trust that you will make good judgment based on all the information gathered. And yeah, I appreciate the opportunity here to see, you know, one or maybe even two properties redeveloped that are old homes that probably will never be worth renovating to increase the value in my experience. So I do commend them for, for working on something like that. However, two properties here purchased would allow them to move the building all the way to the front and have parking in the back, which would be much better for neighbors if something, you know, if the direction the city wants to go is to do multifamily here, which I've been told is not the direction, as well as when we had the municipal review board, they kind of looked at that as well and basically told us to do two-story, only we were, had to stick with two-story on the other side, which is in your zoning, in zoning plan or development plan as the transitional housing. So that's about all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for? Okay, Counselor Penner has a question for the objector. Mr. Weave, Mr. Weave, counsel, Counselor Penner has a question for you.
Just to clarify, you're not opposed to the rezoning? You're opposed to the variance?
I'm opposed to the rezoning because you, I can't see how it's logical to rezone something before having a variance. It requires a variance.
But if it's two lots, if it's two lots, you'd be okay with the rezoning?
I mean, yeah, I'm a developer. I can't sit here and say, "I don't want to see somebody else develop even if they're competing against me." It's the city's decision if they want to consider changing zoning in an area where they're, have told me in the past and others, members of the public, that they want to stay single-family and duplex. It's not my decision.
Presumably, if they had bought another lot, as you suggest, it would be a much bigger?
Well, it would make much more sense for the city to be able to consider the change, in my opinion. That is why we purchased six properties. I'm not here to boast, but on the other side of the street, we purchased six properties before coming to you.
How many units do you have on the property?
64, but on all, yeah. So it's not a matter of the amount of units, to me. It's a matter of if you allow this, I, you know, I will be one of them that will one day see an old house, you know, in the middle of two nice homes where I can, I'm not saying I will do this for sure, but where I could realize and justify, "Hey, maybe the city will allow this at 70 feet, just like Mr. Jodwin said, you allowed it somewhere else." So who will all of us be to say, "It's not allowed here where there's two nicer homes, but it is here?" That's not really fair enough.
Are there any variances on your project across the street?
No, no, we have no variances on there. We have about 45 feet on the side yards to the buildings because we have our parking lots on the buffer zone. So I mean, I know that's way beyond what the city requires. You can have four feet. That is something that I believe even as a developer, the four feet is not necessary. I think if a plan can't allow for a little bit more than that, you can't even landscape and engineer a plan properly with four-foot side yards on a large complex. It just doesn't work. You have big retaining walls and it just messes things up, in my opinion. Yeah. So, any other questions?
Anything further? That'll be all. Cool. Okay, thank you. Can I get you to go to the podium? Yeah. Because we, we tape everything, so. Thank you, Mr. Jodwin.
I, I just realized, Counselor Penner had asked me before if I'd ever applied for a variation in a commercial sense. I never have. I did apply for a variation with respect to the property that's directly behind my residence, which I also own. It's a, it's a, it's a property that's rented out. And effectively, what I did is, we live on Hanover, and directly behind us is Henry, so I bought the house behind me on Henry so that I could build a, a shop, okay, a garage for all my junk. And, and so instead of it being 800 square feet, I think it's 1,000 square feet or whatever, and I spoke to the neighbors, but I just, I wanted to be, in fairness to Counselor Penner and council, I, I realized that, after I sat down and started thinking about it, that I had applied, that, that's from a personal perspective. It's not from any, a commercial perspective where I've ever applied, whether it's residential or commercial, to my knowledge. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much for clearing that up. Is there anyone else here wishing to object? Go ahead.
My name is Justin Geisheimer. I live at 52 First Street in the duplex unit that's there, so that was built as of 2009. I've only been living there for just under three years, and Stefan came by and he was very friendly to me and gave me all the information. I was altogether half asleep because I wake at 5:00 or 4:00 AM to work at 5:00. And my blessing, according to his words, was probably more in the sense of just anything is better than what's there. We need to see some kind of change. And I don't know all the zoning rules, I don't know all the things that you guys are going to be talking about when it comes to this. But the thing for me, as just a humble homeowner in the area, is just the precedent that it sets for the rest of the properties on the south side of First Street. I understand the north side is changing and that's happening, and that's fine, but the precedent that it sets for some of the lots that have been sold in the last several months, just curious if, or just if that's going to set a precedent and allow more of these multifamily complexes to be built next to my home, that's a duplex, and seeing something like, like our property similar in that area would be nice, or a four-plex or something like that, but that's just all I have to say about it. So, thanks.
Just to clarify, you're officially objecting?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any questions from council? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to object? Does the applicant wish to reply to any of these objections?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. So there was one thing that seemed to be the main theme was the site width as well as privacy, both. That is an issue that has to be dealt with the immediate neighbors. The privacy issue is not a, not, not an issue for the surrounding neighbors in the neighborhood, it's the immediate neighbors, those we spoke to and those we have gotten the okay from. So that's in terms of the privacy, as well as, as well as we explained that we want to construct a fence to keep it, keep it like that, and yeah. And in regards to the front setback, it, it's deeper. The reason for, for us putting a house like this or a building like this on is we intend to keep it for long-term rental. We want to maintain it, we want to rent it, we want, we want to be the new neighbors, essentially. So the other style of development that we see, and I believe that's what's happening across the road, is like a townhouse style, which has the problem of not facing the street, which is one of the things that people have objections with because then you just see a wall driving past it, and in my opinion, that does not necessarily look better than trees, shrubs, and a 30-foot driveway. So that's, and in regards to the 70-foot, 75-foot width, I completely understand that there is rules and regulations, bylaws, whatever, on hand that kind of guide what you should be looking for. I believe in, council over the years has dealt with numerous variances, and I believe the, here we're talking, like I said, only about five feet, and same with, like the, Mr. Jodwin explained that he wanted to build a bigger shop. Well, if the neighbors surrounding it were okay with it, then I don't see why you shouldn't be able to, even though that was technically only 800 square feet, and, and council could have said, "No, that's, that's it." But I believe on individual basis, council has in the past and considered it, and so yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Any other questions of council for the applicant?
Okay, so?
Question from the administration?
Yes. Counselor Penner? Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's been a lot of talk with regards to the width of the property. This does indeed meet the side yard requirements for residential moving density?
My understanding is that the concept plan that's been submitted by the applicant would be within the setback requirements. That would have to be verified by a particular site plan, that would be a condition of permit. But based on as it stands right now, it would meet the setback requirements for side yards.
Anything further, council? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone wishing to object? This is the final time.
Object to the?
To the zoning.
Zoning change.
Zoning change. Take the, take the podium, please. Yes. Sorry, the rezoning or the, the variance is subject to the rezoning. So if we don't pass the?
Sorry, the rezoning is subject, the recommendation is?
Oh, recommending, oh, sorry.
Very bottom of the administration's time to together, the very last line.
Okay. So the recommendation is that council give secondary to the development agreement subject to the approval of the variance. So, so yeah, it is, it's subject to the approval of variance too. So, yes.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you can.
We have talked to the, the neighbor, don't know my directions, one of the side neighbors, and they are looking to sell within a few years. At the moment, we're not as fortunate as Luke is with buying six properties at a time, we're young developers looking to start up and doing future developments. We want to do everything as right as possible, be accommodating, and we believe we've done a lot of homework, we've learned a lot throughout the process. So yes, we, we are considering for down the road. It's just, at the time, it's just not a possibility for us, as well as the neighbors are not considering it just yet. They said, "Give us two, three years and then we, we would consider selling for, for that type of, yeah, purpose." And?
Question for the applicant?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I just ask, we've received a letter of objection from a resident at 41st Street, which is very close, that's Wendy DeRoche. Is that one, are Michelle and Wendy DeRoche, have, were they one of the people that you had spoken to? Do you recall whether, because that one is?
My list is handy.
That's at 41st Street.
Just one second.
Down, I guess. As you mentioned, immediate neighbors, and this is, this would, the objections, this would be the closest one to an immediate neighbor.
Looking at my list here, they do not own, they do not live at that property. We have handed a flyer to the tenant that lives there to pass on that information to, to, we had our phone number on there and asked if they had any questions, concerns that we deal with this prior to this meeting. Having, having heard none, we assume that everything is fine and dandy. And everyone else immediately, we have spoken, that was the one rental that's bordering right next to it, therefore, we don't, we didn't have a phone number that we could call.
Is there a follow-up question?
That's good, thanks.
Okay. This is, because we've had interruptions, I will ask one more time, this will be the final time, is there anyone else here wanting to object? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens?
Motion to, motion to not accept.
Motion to deny? Do we have a second or for that? Okay, Counselor Hebert? Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the work that you've put into this. It is a learning process, I think ongoing, even though 12 years on council, it's still a learning process here as well. Part of this, I walked those properties today, as I have a couple times in the last couple weeks, and I took a look at this too. I keep coming back to the official community the official community plan and the work that was involved in 2010, and then again in 2015 when we reviewed it. When we, in 2010, we put the central business district into place, and it runs all the way down Highway 52, or Main Street on Highway 52. And then we looked carefully at First Street, and we needed to transitional zone to transition from the commercial, for the central business district, the commercial zoning that was there. We put a transitional zone in on First Street, on the north side of First Street. We left the south side of First Street as single-family homes. And I think we need to stick with that plan that we had, as I've stated earlier. Part of this is, though, that I have a problem with not accepting this, and that not taking the plan. I think the plan itself is okay. I think it's too many residences for that property, the way it sits. Because when you look at the neighboring properties, especially the ones to the west, there's no choice for us then to also change that one to medium-density housing as well. Because nobody's going to take and build, that house also needs transitioning. And that means automatically, we're going to have to approve, by precedent, we're going to have to approve a multifamily dwelling there as well. If we approve this year today, then we changed the perspective and our thought process that we did have for the south side of First Street. And that was single-family development, or duplex development. I think an eight-suite is too much there. I would, I think a duplex fits into that area and so on. Because we are transitioning into single-family housing on east, right then behind, on the other streets in that area. So, I think that the community plan is correct in this case. And I think there's been a lot of different comments made. But I think there's a precedent set if we start to develop multifamily housing on the south side of First Street.
Thank you. Anything further, Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank the applicant for presenting here today, and thank the objectors that came and took time out of their day to inform Council on what their concerns are. From the applicant's point of view, see some good things. He, they don't object to, or they talk about the encochement on either side. Instead of four feet, they're going to 10 feet. It doesn't meet the 12-foot variance. They talk about, you know, we talk about a transition zone, transition zone on the one side. Here, we're sort of leapfrogging past some houses and going to a multiplex. I have a concern about that. I would like to mention, and no, nothing personal, Mr. Weep, interesting that you would object from multiplex on one side to multiplex on the other side, when yours is quite a bit larger. But I said, but nothing personal. Okay. What I see here, I see the objectors coming here, very passionate, very concerned, and obviously, this bothers them. As Council, yes, we have to abide by bylaws, rules, and regulations. But also, we represent everybody in the city. And from that point of view, and as stated by Mr. Council Siemens, I too object to, to the zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Penner?
Thank you. I will not support the motion. I think it was an excellent presentation. But that aside, it's, when we have old dilapidated homes out of rental units, in general, we want them to be developed. But for a developer to come by essentially a single-family home, tear that down, and rebuild, there's no, it's cost prohibitive, really. So, it is a bit of a challenging situation. Either we keep these old dilapidated homes, or we have to allow an increase in density, because it's cost prohibitive otherwise. Thing about this project is, if it was replaced with a single-family, the single-family could be the same height as this project is. It's not going above a two-story, what could potentially be a two-story home. This is a transitional area. I know we were talking about the street, but the whole point of our official community plan is to guide. But we do have variances for exactly this type of reason. If something makes sense, that's why we have the variance process. And this makes sense. We've, you know, starting at PTH 12, there's three-story, and it's going to two-story across the street, a big 64-unit project. And this, to me, is a very logical transition across the street. So, that, for those reasons, I will not support the motion.
Okay. Councilor Swigster?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will also not support the motion to deny. And I will just say, by acknowledging, this has been a very tough public hearing, mainly because it's really tough to hear. I apologize to everyone here for the difficulty we've all heard hearing, and to those who came and presented, this has been really difficult to hear. And we have so many people that want to be at City Hall. I guess that is great. Just a couple of things here. When we look at a rezoning, we consider the, what the change is. And so, in this case here, it's a request to rezone from residential low-density to residential medium-density in the community plan. This designated as residential. So, those are, you know, categories that fit within the general community plan. So, I'm not seeing a contradiction of our official community plan here, because it's designated as residential, and this is still residential. So, just to respond to that point that was made. As far as the particular presentation here, I think we need to acknowledge that the developers have done a lot of things right here, in terms of going to the neighbors and talking to them. And it's important to remember that while we do have a few people from the area, and some who are not from the area directly, that are here, there are also people that are, that are there that did not object. And we can't assume that the relatively small number of people that we have here represents the whole area. It may, it may not. But that's a, that's a rather bold assumption to make, that this is representing, that this is representing the whole area. In terms of what they're proposing, we're talking about, they have a plan for eight units, two-story structure. So, again, a single-family home, as Councilor Penner had mentioned, could, could go to the same height. So, there is no height difference. I sort of wonder what would satisfy some, as far as what would, what would work, as far as any multifamily development. Because, you know, if it was done sideways, and the parking wasn't in the front, the complaint would be it's sideways, and that's not good. That doesn't really fit in. And so, now they have it so that it's in the front, and now the complaint is, well, it's too far back. And, you know, they were trying to put it back because, so that way there's, you can have the parking there. And such means sometimes, you just have to decide what are, what are you going to do. And when you consider that there is multifamily in the area already, not just what was recently approved, but in terms of the, in the general area, that there is others as well, on the whole, when you consider that the, that as far as medium-density goes, this is fairly moderate compared to what medium-density potentially could be, and the effort that's been made to communicate with neighbors, and a reminder as well that this would have to fit within our infill policy that is reviewed by staff afterwards. And it should be noted that, you know, the concerns that were raised about side yards, as the city manager pointed out, whatever plan they submit for site plan approval will have to fit with whatever the, whatever the rules are. The only variance that they're asking for is in regards to, in regards to the width, 70 to 75 feet, which, again, as far as variances go, is definitely on the small side of what's being looked for. We certainly have applications which have asked for variances that are considerably more. So, I think it's important we take the whole context into consideration. And it's not perfect. No, no application is. But I think on the whole, on the balance, this is a reasonable change, a reasonable rezoning. So, I won't support the motion to deny it.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also will not be supporting the motion to deny. I feel that the applicant has done a fantastic job in terms of making sure that this is something that fits in the neighborhood. Just as an example, the 25 feet that you mentioned in your conceptual plan in the front, to be able to have some green space, some trees, some shrubage, to be able to make sure that you are not hiding, but you're making the fit of the neighborhood as nice as you can. The conceptual plan, as we've been noted from our city planner, is consistent with our city's infill, infill policy, which is not the easiest to do. I commend you on that as well. One big thing that I am a huge proponent of is there are single-bedroom suites that you are offering. You need to have affordable housing for our residents. And single-bedroom suites is something that we really are desperate for in the city, to be able to have, single-income people be able to have their own residence. This is, great consideration was made for the height, consistent with residential low-density. And aside, we do have some objections, but there also is, should be noted that there is support at the doors, as you mentioned. So, for that reason, I will not be supporting the motion to deny.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, Council? I also, I will not support the motion. I thank everyone. I think, good, good presentation. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, all the objectors. But I do believe that this developer, that is diligent in what they're doing. They've gone to the neighborhood. They did that before they came to, to Council for their variance. They also want to build a quality product. And they've, they've done, in my opinion, they've done what it takes to develop in, in the right fashion. So, for that reason, I will also vote against the motion. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Motion.
Yeah, all those in favor of the motion. Okay. Opposed? That is denied. Council, we've got a motion that was denied. We do need to go forward with the motion. Councilor Swigster?
Make the motion to approve.
Do you want it? And seconded? Okay. Seconded by Councilor Penner. Go ahead, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, we've said it before. Again, as far as I believe that this, it's a, it's a reasonable change that's, that's being proposed, and the developers have done what they needed to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on the, on the point that variances are on a case-by-case basis. And this case is a case where I feel that they have made every single effort to make this work the best that they can without a variance, but unfortunately, it is required. So, I, that is why I will support the motion to approve.
Anything, Councilor Siemens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Didn't get the opportunity to close.
Oh, sorry.
Prior discussion. Sorry. It's all right. We'll talk now. This is certainly not a height issue that I see. I think this is a precedent that we're setting for the south side. This is, opposes what we have in our official community plan. That's why there's a variation request, because it's not part of that. I understand that. But I think eight units are too much for that area. I agree exactly what Councilor Penner said, is the developer, you to sign that, has done a good job of doing their homework. They have, they're coming in here, and they're building a quality facility. I agree with all that. But I don't agree that is the change that we're making on our official community plan for the south side of First Street, and that will change the precedent moving forward. Because now, we will be obligated to do multifamily along that stretch. Because we have now set a precedent that it's also, that the south side is also transitional housing to give the single-family housing to the south of that.
Anything further? Councilor Penner?
Just to respond to Councilor Siemens' comments, to touch on that, we have an infill housing policy for a reason. There's numerous areas in the city where there's infill housing that doesn't necessarily change the whole neighborhood to transitional zone. We have infill housing right in the middle of residential, where there's no transition, no commercial, nothing. So, I don't see that as necessarily being, that's an assumption. It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be the case, why we have the infill housing policy.
Anything further? Anything in closing?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Just to respond to Councilor Siemens' point, the city's official community plan is not changing. If the land is designated residential, it will still be designated residential. There is no change to the community plan. There is no contradiction to the official community plan. It's a general designation of residential, and medium-density is just as residential as low-density.
Thank you. Okay, that was in closing. So, I will call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you, Council. Okay, Mr. Warquentin, should we go into the variance now? Or, because I noticed we've got just the second reading here posted. We...
Mr. Mayor, the, I did introduce both files at the beginning of the public hearing. And the indication that the public hearing was to be held concurrently, all the recommendation is, as provided within the agenda package, was that Council reserve its decision on the variance until the matter of the rezoning has been dealt with at third reading.
At third reading?
If that's what Council wishes to do.
Okay. So, are we going to third reading?
However, however, at this time, it's recommended that Council limit the reading to only second reading tonight. And this file would be brought back to a future meeting of Council.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Council. We are moving on to number seven, which is our delegation. We have...
Sorry. I was going to say, we're going to have a, you know, the mayor's, your, we're going to have, you coming off, they would have these variations at a public hearing. Okay, and I specifically been prepared to have that.
Correct.
So, we have to have a public hearing to respect the variation.
We're having the variation that we dealt with at a separate meeting when it comes back for third reading, correct? No?
The public notice advertised both the bylaw and the variance to be held at a public hearing tonight.
Okay. Then I misunderstood that. So, we're going to the variance here?
We should reopen the hearing.
Okay. Okay, then I'll reopen the, the, the public hearing, close the council meeting. Okay. We will be dealing with the variance V 2019-18. It's been introduced already. Is the applicant here today?
I'd just like to thank everyone for realizing how much effort went into this. And for those, everyone also here, realizing that it's just one small number that, there's no, yes, that number is being brought up time and time again. And, but if there was a reason attached to that number moving by this small amount, then we would go and do something from our side and see what we really could do to address those concerns. The concern is just, the number doesn't, just missed. And that's, I don't know from a development standpoint how I would deal with that of a narrow miss, if you understand what I mean. Thanks.
Is there anyone here wishing to object?
So, what then is the test for variance? For the old veterans on Council, you know what it is. For the new, if I may be obliged, typically, variances are granted when the property owner can demonstrate that existing zoning regulations present a practical difficulty in making use of the property. Counselor Zagstra indicated earlier that what use could be made of this property, how about a beautiful duplex? Okay, which will complement this gentleman's duplex two doors down. How about a beautiful duplex? The lots that I developed in the arm of Hanover for duplexes have not less than 70 feet frontage for duplex. And we're talking an eight-plex on that type of frontage. So, we have zoning bylaws for a reason. And here is what I'm told, the sound theory is, variances should be granted only when a property owner would have a unique and unusual hardship. What is it? Have you heard? Remember I told you $45,000 a door, times eight? You guys can do the math. Okay? Property that he bought July 1st is worth a lot more if this variance is granted. Yeah, they've done a lot of hard work, and I commend these young gentlemen for the work that they've done. But that's not what makes a great city plan. What makes a great city plan is we get together, we develop an official community plan, and we think that the decisions that we're going to make today, okay, are going to affect the neighborhood for the next 50 to 100 years. Whether we put a church by WS, okay, or somewhere else, we understand, and Council understands, for the next 100 years, this is how it's going to be. So, these decisions are, in fact, critical. So, is there a unique and unusual hardship created by the physical characteristics of the land? If the hardship is not unique, here's the test. If the hardship is not unique, and other property owners have the same situation, the theory says the zoning regulations themselves should be changed, rather than having property owners seek exceptions on a case-by-case basis. owners seek exceptions on a case-by-case basis. Is that, is that what we're getting into in this community, in this beautiful city of Steinbach, that I've been blessed to be part of since 1983? That everybody can apply, oh, the city will grant a variance? And you're talking about five feet? Say, well, five feet's not very much. Well, five feet on seventy? My math's not very good. What is it, seven percent? So we'll grant seven, we'll grant a seven percent change here, so that these individuals who just bought the property can't build a beautiful duplex there, but they're going to build an eightplex there? What's the unique hardship? Why are we going to make an exception? Planners spend their entire lives trying to figure out what a good minimum is for multi, for multifamily lots. And they say the minimum is seventy-five feet. These are people who spend their lives going to university. They come up with a number, and we've accepted that number. After appropriate consultation, consideration, Mr. Siemens says in 2010, I was part of that process, we look at everything. We say, okay, is this right? Is this right? Is this right? And we come up with a number, and we say, as a minimum, as a minimum, seventy-five feet. I mean, you have to realize how small seventy-five feet by itself is, and how small seventy feet is. If I buy my house on 375 Hanover, the lot's seventy feet wide, and my side yards are nonexistent. And we're going to put an eightplex? We're going to vary the zoning bylaw to allow an eightplex on a seventy-foot lot? And if you don't think, when we do this, and if there's not a unique reason for doing it, and there's not undue hardship that's been proved by these gentlemen, that everyone else in town is not going to buy a seventy-foot lot and show up and say the precedent's been set? And, and Counselor Penner has indicated, what else could he do with the lot? Yes, we want to see these, these dilapidated homes, okay, refreshed. Duplex lots are worth a lot more than res, single residential lots, as you may or may not know. But if you're going to talk about transition and planning, shouldn't we have single-family duplexes, and then multifamily across the street? That's what's called planning. Not allowing an eightplex right next to a, 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 a single-family dwelling that, where all of the residents have the, will be looking into the backyard? I think if you own the home, and, and I'm happy that Mr. Geisheimer's attended, because I actually thought that he would be here. Because if I owned that duplex, I'd be here. Where you have an eightplex being built with a setback like it is, not only do you have people looking into your backyard, your private backyard, your front yard is never private, your private backyard, okay? When they're in their residences, looking out the windows, you also have them looking into your backyard when they drive up. So I put it to you. I put it to you, if in fact, the requirement is a unique and unusual hardship, I ask you to tell me what it is. What it is that's unique and unusual about this property, for which a beautiful duplex cannot be built upon, which it's already zoned for, and which makes sense from a planning perspective, and you transition from single-family to duplex to multifamily. I ask you, why, why, why would we make an exception in the absence of any evidence that there is a unique and unusual hardship? The applicants have indicated that there was support for the application, and I think one of, one of your council members, your worship, may have said, yes, there's support for, for this application, whether it's the variation for the zoning, or the application, the changes zoning, or the variation application. I put it to you, where are those people? Where are, where are those people when we know that the one neighbor immediately next door is objecting by written correspondence, I understand? Mr. Geisheimer's here, he's two doors down. We have heard from a number of other objectors. Where are the people that are consenting? Do we have a letter? Where's the evidence? This was a court of law, and to some extent it is, this is a public hearing, and you have to make a decision based upon the best evidence put before you. Where is the evidence of the support of any, any of the neighbors, other than hearsay? You have a lot of firsthand evidence of people objecting, but I haven't heard one single piece of evidence that's been put before you, Stephen. Not one piece that's not admissible in the court of law. So I say to you, where is the evidence that there is support for this application? Those are my comments. Subject to any comments, questions you may have.
Any questions of counsel? Okay, seeing none.
Thank you. Good evening.
Is there anyone else?
Ms. Burgess, 56 Donald, object to the variance based on the fact that it breaks the bylaw. Counselor Penner referred to your infill policy, which I find rather amusing, given that the development across the street directly violates this policy, and I have to ask whether Ms. Penner has actually even read the policy. Setting a precedent like this is setting a precedent for the entire south side of First Street. When we attended a public hearing here, oh, I don't know, when was it? 2012. Susan Penner objected to multifamily on First Street, and I quote, "I wouldn't want it in my backyard," unquote. And you can check your records on that, because I have transcription from that meeting. From that meeting, it was also noted that we should avoid setting these precedents. But here we are again today, fighting for the rights of the people on First Street on the south side, for the people that live on the north side that have been directly impacted by the developments that have happened, and I strongly object.
Were there any questions for the app? Any, anyone else wish to object?
Jamie Burgess, 56 Donald Street. I'm here to object to the variance. As a, the developer said it's a minor variance of five feet, which is, and his mind is correct, but that five feet means either you get the RMD or you don't. So it's not a small little variance. It's a huge variance to make that lot, to make requirements of the bylaw to be seventy-five feet. And my, and to all everybody else's objections, I object to those as further as well.
Is there any, anyone else wishing to object to the variance? Is there anyone else wishing to object? I'll ask one more time, is there anyone else wishing to object? Okay, Mr. Warkentin, when you were talking before, it was quite noisy. I didn't quite hear everything you were saying. That's why it was unclear going forward. So we're, we, we vote on the variance tonight, then? Or do we do that after third reading?
Recommendation is counsel, hear all the evidence with respect to the public hearing, close the public hearing, however, reserve judgment on a decision for the variance until after bylaw 2125 has been considered for third reading.
Thank you, counsel. That was what I thought. It's just, it was a little bit cloudy with all the noise. Okay, I will now close the public hearing, open the council meeting, and counsel, we will, will save judgment for a later date when the item comes back for third reading. Thank you very much. Now, because it's just a little bit after 7:45. We finally get to, get to our delegation. Mr. Morley Fatt, from Clear Spring Greens Pass. Sorry for how long it took. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Thank you for seeing us, mayor and counsel. Phil Remple and I are, would like to speak to the situation that we're in. I'm so sorry about the noise out there, but when you have a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty people out there, it's, and they're, they're probably more passionate than I am. They wanted to be here to make sure that you are aware of the pressure that, that we are, that we're dealing with in our neighborhood. And, and we've had a situation where we had a bike crash here just a little bit ago, and a car narrowly missed about a nine-year-old boy, eight-year-old boy. And thankfully, all he did was crash into the ditch and do a somersault and lived to tell the tale. But neighbors talk, and, and we're, we're panicking. We know for a fact that the promises were made by everybody that knocked on our door, that this, that this walkway was, was almost a sure thing. And we ended up in a situation where we heard from some of the members that, that it possibly would move into another year, and, and that we just don't feel that's acceptable. And so Bill's going to speak to the numbers that are in our neighborhood, and, and the kind of return on investment you get from us, and then we'll carry on a bit more with a few things that I want to tell you about. Glad, Bill.
Thank you, counsel and mayor. As you can see, we have a significant amount of people, and so my apologies for, for the noise level and trying to carry on your regular business here, but as you can see, this is definitely a very important thing to a lot of people in this development. There's a, to, to my understanding, there's approximately a hundred and forty houses in there, valuing at around forty-eight million dollars altogether, which is significant, if you, if you figure out the tax base or whatever the tax amounts on that, that's a significant amount of tax dollars that, that is being collected by the city every year. We have lived in this, I myself have lived in this neighborhood for six years approximately, and as that, we've, we also have four children, and we, we have, who have attended Clear Spring Middle School for those years, and Clear Spring Middle School has, has, of course, in their, trying to encourage people to, to bike and walk to school, and my kids, I have, my children, as they have gone through there, have, I have refused to allow them to go biking down that road, because it is just clearly unsafe. Counsel will also know the amount of traffic. I don't know if you guys have done a traffic study as of, as of late, since the paving of, of Old Tom Road, but there has a significant increase in, in traffic. And so that, that is a big concern. The other, the other part of it, if we go to the other side now on Clear Spring Road, there is also, there is the pool, and the, the new BMX track, and the park, and, and again, I refuse to allow my children to, to take their bikes or walk down that pathway, walk down the street to access the city's stuff that they have. And so, yeah, there's a significant amount of people here that are all trying to say, when is the shovel going to hit the road because, or hit the dirt? Because we, if, if, if any one of us loses a child or, or whatever, it's going to be a serious, and counsel, I hope, would then get the shovel and the dirt, but that would be far too late, because somebody's going to pay for, for the rest of their lives for, for that decision, so.
Yeah, we're thankful that Old Tom Road was paved. That makes our homes more livable and less dusty, and that's fantastic. But you've essentially created an environment where you've accessed automobile traffic to lower, it's almost amazing. Today, I had the pleasure of sitting at the intersection at Long Boulevard, and I was car thirteen in line. No, truthfully, it was four fifteen. That's the busiest possible time, but that's when I had to leave. And that would be when kids would be coming home from school and potentially biking. And, and when you have that level of traffic, no parent, and I, and I, I almost guarantee you, you could go down that road almost any time, and rarely ever will you see a child on that road. And so you've created a situation where you've landlocked us, and you've said, we're not part of Steinbach. You can't come. Or you're saying you're willing to put the lives of our children at stake if you want to come. And it's just, it's, it's a, it's very, very frustrating, and I, and I know the level of dollars and cents that you guys get from that neighborhood. And in the presentation just before that, we were talking about a hundred years, how it affects things. You put that walkway in place, you know those houses are going nowhere, and you know you're going to do it. I want to know why you're stalling. Why, why, so my question to counsel, to each and every one of you, and I certainly am welcome to listening to any responses you have, why are we not getting a walkway?
We're not stalling. We are, we're working through our budgets. Our 2019 budget did not allow us to do anything in the, in that, in that area at all. And we, at this point, it's, it's difficult to talk about what we've talked about, because it's been at a private meeting. If there's land to buy or anything like that, it can affect those kinds of things. So we, the prices of that. So we need to keep this, I guess, as quiet as possible until we're ready to bring it forward, right? But I, you need to know that counsel and our staff have taken this under advisement, and we are working on to some sort of conclusion for this. It's just, it's too soon to, to bring this... Pardon? We've been working on, we've been working on this for some time, but the, I guess it hasn't...
Hasn't been important enough?
No, it's been important. It just, it, it definitely came at this next last election. It definitely became a concern, and it became a, an issue. Yes?
If you don't mind, I would just like to make a comment. Many of you may be our second-time homebuyers or bought into that area, but when it was developed, it was developed low service. So now, on, for example, a high-service development in Steinbach, the lots, priced into the lots are sidewalk. So if you see a Lexington Village going up, for example, the homeowners, the people who buy those lots, are paying for the sidewalks upfront. When this development was approved, it was approved as low service. So that didn't actually include, that doesn't mean you're not going to eventually get it, but it was because it's a low-service area, sidewalks were not factored into the lot price. So that is where the challenge has come in. The lots were at a reduced rate because of that. And so now people want...
Hold it, you guys. Not going to get anywhere like...
You have to do this one at a time, or we'll get nowhere. And you have to go to the podium to speak. You can go ahead to speak, yes.
This has actually become an issue because of the traffic flow that's happening. There's basically one road that gets you from north to south in Steinbach, and that's been Highway 12, which worked when Steinbach was small. But what happened when Old Tom got paved a couple of years ago is that Park Road, Old Tom, and Hespler became a perimeter road around Steinbach. It's become very dangerous. There's traffic going both ways on a narrow two-lane road, and people are getting impatient, and they're trying to whiz by when there are pedestrians and cyclists on the road. Whether they're, they are low-service or full-service lots, doesn't matter. It's a traffic issue. When Old Tom got paved, more traffic came, and it came at a very faster rate. So it doesn't matter if it's low service. We're not asking for the lots to be changed or for anything to be upgraded. This is a traffic issue. Doesn't have anything to do with how the lots are done. Low service, high service, it's still a traffic problem, and you still have little kids. So whether we talk about low service or high service and cloud the issue, the problem is that kids are going to get hurt.
It's not, just, just to address that, we're not arguing that you shouldn't have sidewalks, and we absolutely see the problem. I'm just explaining why it wasn't done within two years of the development going up. But we obviously see that there's an issue now. That's not clouding the issue or saying it's not important. I'm just giving you a reason why we're at the twelve-year mark and why it wasn't done. I'm just giving you a reason why we're at the 12-year mark and why it wasn't done a year or two, for example.
Just one thing, could we have that last lady's name?
Dirksen from Mooney Avenue.
Um, we, we didn't want to bring up the low service because we, we didn't really want to feel that way. Those lots, the, the profit was made by other people. We're the homeowners. And, and, and you're right, a lot of us are second-time owners. I'm, I'm a first time, but there's a lot of second-time owners. I talked to a lady just yesterday, or, or maybe the day before, and she mentioned to me that, uh, that she bought the house because she, you know, she looked through the house, it was absolutely fantastic, it looked good, and, and they made a deal. And then she says, "It's interesting when you all of a sudden realize, oh, you're trapped." And she used the word "trapped," and, and of course, that's how a lot of us feel. And, uh, and so I just thought I'd share, you know, what she thought. When you mention about buying land, um, I totally believe that there is opportunities to, um... There's ways to get out of that neighborhood without having to buy land, I believe. Now, I don't know who owns every square inch of the land, but the golf course would be the one issue with that final section running from Mooney to the golf course. That would already get out everybody in Clear Spring Greens with the exception of Ramsgate, Russfast, and Lionsgate. And, uh, and so there has to be something done there. But when I looked at the ditches along that road, um, I talked to the engineer here in the town, and he said, "Well, we can't go stealing ditches because they need, uh, you know, a certain amount of water flow and so on." So we absolutely had a beautiful little rain the other day. I know because my house was swimming. And I took a picture, you can pass them along. I took a picture of each section of the road right after that rain. On the east side of the road, the ditches were full, the corn for the first few feet that I could see was underwater. And there's the pictures of our side of the road. There was virtually no water in there. It got absorbed. I do not believe it ran at all. I believe it pretty much went down. The reason I believe that is because Lionsgate doesn't even have a culvert, so there's no way for that water to make its way to the creek at all. So, so there is a chance that you could do something from Lionsgate, bypassing the creek going the other way towards, uh, Clear Spring Green, and, uh, and probably not have to purchase land, although I don't want to speak, uh, you know, without real clarity on, on who owns that last little section of golf course land. When you purchased it with the town, uh, the, the nine holes, did you purchase that land where the driving range is on?
Um, no, we just purchased the, where the, uh, the first nine holes are.
First nine holes, not the driving range?
Do not think we did. Mr. Orkantine, can you speak to that? I, I think we just bought the nine holes, the first nine hole.
That's correct.
Yeah, the driving range is the golf course.
Okay. So there could be an issue there, but there is still a fair amount of ditch there. It's not bad. The tree line is pushed back. They may own beyond the tree line. I'm not real certain about that. If they only own till the tree line, if that is the property line, uh, just, you know, no engineering degree here, but I, I believe there would be enough dirt, a, a flat section there to get a, a fairly substantial walkway, uh, on the, on the, on the ditch side of those trees.
So you mean Park Road?
Yeah, on Park Road. Yeah. That would get, that would get that neighborhood to the rec center, to the bike park, and to downtown because there's a beautiful pathway leading through back of, uh, the aquatic center there.
Well, I do want to, uh, I do want to assure everyone in the neighborhood, we are working on this. There, there will be, there will be something that we could present. I, it would probably be somewhat after next, the next study section in November, I would think. But at this point, it's, it's just too soon to, uh, to bring it forward. But we are working on it. Our engineers are, are working on a plan, and, and, um, we know it's serious, and we feel for you.
Very serious.
We feel for you. You have, you have our complete heart's care, but we, we still have to work within our restraints and our budget restraints that we have.
No, I understand that, but I, I, I've had the opportunity of hearing a little bit about your physical or your financial, uh, constraints and the, and the way you deal with them, and, and you're in an enviable position for towns, probably in Canada. You guys operate a tight ship. Awesome. I'm sure that's great. But when I look at my tax dollars, um, I lived in Alberta, and, uh, and my house was worth, you know, noticeably more than it is here in Steinbach, and my tax bill is about the same. And so I'm, I'm sure that, you know, it's no cheaper to build a road or, or do infrastructure in, uh, in Alberta than it is here. And so when I heard the stories of some of the tax bills, I just was asking a few people, and they, they shared the amount that they were paying. It didn't sound like we were a low-service neighborhood. So...
We have a well and drain order.
Oh, totally.
That's all we get, those are the amenities we get.
Yeah.
So, but we're getting taxes collected like we are getting amenities, but what?
It seems like, yeah. So you know the story. We don't want to be jerks about this. This is not the goal. Not breaking any arms, but I don't want to wait, because if you take it into November, that means that construction will start next spring, and that means that there won't be any walkway for the, like, all, all winter, all next summer for our kids. And, uh, you know, my, my grandbabies can't come visit me. I just won't let them, it's so sad. If you're thinking about putting shovels in the ground, um, you know, I, I just think you need to find the money. I just really think that, that, I, I know you have a slush fund. I, I know there's money available if you, if you all agree that it should be allotted to something. And I, I think, I want you to find the money, or I'm asking you to find the money so that we can get started on it sooner than being another full year out before we see my grandchildren coming to visit me, or these guys' kids getting over to the rec center.
Okay. Well, at, uh, at this time, I, uh, I thank you for coming, and thank you for your comments. We will, we will take them under advisement.
Thank you.
And, and, um, and we will, uh, we'll move on from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your time, and, uh, Council as well.
So thank you very much. I just, I just, uh, sorry, Serge Joliker. Thank you again. I just have to ask Susan one thing. We're referencing our areas of low-service area, and I'm not gonna bring that up. I get it, it's because of the, the well and low...
I'm just explaining why the line, why it's not sidewalks.
Right. So, so Deerfield, uh, what is Deerfield area to you guys?
That would be good.
I, yeah. Okay. I have no problem with that. I, I like doing that, so that way I, I do get informed. But I did a walk, and I did my homework in that, in that area, so...
If you, uh, call the city office, um, Deb Remple will, uh, set up an appointment.
Okay. I just figured if I, if I come up and introduce myself, maybe you'll say, "Ooh, that's her." So that's me. Thank you.